Making a special attempt to be here tonight. It's an important day in our history because we're coming to something that's been going on for six years. And what we're going to do is go ahead and call to order. A special call council meeting concerning the resolution of the Park Central bond issue specifically. So, we are confined to discussing only that matter. Deja vu, I think I've seen all of you yesterday, it seems like, so can't get enough of one another. So, but anyway, we're here to discuss this matter. The record reflect that we started at 6:02. I'm going to ask Eric Shine to lead us in invocation. Please remain standing in Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll go to the roll call.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this wonderful evening and this day. Lord, we just ask you to be with us and give us wisdom and guidance as we go throughout this evening. And we just ask you to be with our emergency workers as they serve the city. Wonderful, glorious, and we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Keith Williams.
Here.
Terry Sayer.
Here.
Thomas Evers.
Here.
Dean Bitner.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey. Paula Allred.
Here.
Eric Shine.
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Here.
Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Of course, there's no old business to discuss. And are we required to do public forum or special sessions?
We're not required to do it in a regular meeting.
Okay. Well, let me begin then.
Here comes Kendall.
We'll give him a chance to get in. Let's gather. Council's fully assembled that way. Let the record reflect that Kendall Stuckey arrived at 6:05.
So noted.
So noted.
Sorry, you missed the pledge.
This is something we obviously called in the latter part of the day. And again, I want to thank every council member for making a special attempt to be here. And we've got, what I feel, some very good news. But anyway, Tom Kettlack and myself have been in a mediation meeting all day long and back and forth with six other attorneys other than Tom and four other attorneys visiting from the University of Arkansas. How that process was taking place. And so, I'm going to let Tom kind of bring you up to date. I know that many of you have not asked any questions about Park Central in quite some time. And so, we have Chris Bunton here tonight. If there's anything that you want to question him on as we proceed with this, ask Jim Hendricks, who is also familiar with some of these issues, to stay tonight. And of course, I appreciate Melanie and Chris and Rick being here as well. Eric, appreciate you being here too. So, we'll go ahead and Tom, if you'd kind of like to bring everybody up to date as far as what we have achieved today, and then we can get into the business decision-making that we need to do, so.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Mayor, for giving up your entire day today to go through a process with a bunch of lawyers confined in a room with a bunch of lawyers. Chris, thank you as well for dropping everything you had going and spending the entire day with us. Both of you, of course, as you know, were integral to the result that we achieved. Y'all, this is a lawsuit that was filed back in, well, four score and seven years ago. As y'all know, there's a neighborhood called or development called Park Central at Pleasant Grove and Seventy-One Business. It was developed back in '05 and '06. In '06, the city received a maintenance bond to cover streets and drainage infrastructure that are out there. And we saw little problems with it. Literally, the entire time it was being built, but then bigger problems began to exhibit themselves throughout the years. And by 2009, previous administration had asked that Garver Engineers, and I believe Chris is the one who headed up the project, investigate more fully the drainage structures, that is, the storm drains that are underneath that entire development out there. And I think, Chris will tell you, there are thousands of feet, is that fair to say, of storm drain under the ground out there. And Chris concluded after his investigation and some camera work that was very expensively done underneath the ground, that the system was failing and in need of repair. We tried to get the developer to help us do that. They were unable to. We then went ahead and notified the bond company. We would be asking for the bond to give us its money to repair. We ended up having to sue the bond. They did not give us any money voluntarily. And that began some very, very lengthy and extremely involved litigation. I say involved because the bond company sued four other parties, saying if we're at fault, they're going to owe us because they're at fault. In other words, if we're going to have to pay, the people who made this wrong are going to have to pay us back. And so, that has wound its way through the courts for years. Lots and lots of discoveries taking place. Depositions and investigation have been done. We've been out there and dug holes with backhoes. We've had, we now learned that someone crawled through every inch of the pipe for their side with a flashlight. But the court ordered us to go to a mediation with a neutral third-party mediator before the two-week trial, which is set for December. And that's what happened today. In that mediation, we, I didn't learn too, too many new things, but certainly the mayor and Chris got to hear some of the defenses and some of the problems that litigation was going to face. And I'm going to be very brief about those. Basically, there are always, whenever an engineer says it's going to be one thing to fix something that's broken, another engineer will always say, just like another lawyer or another doctor or another accountant, no, that's not broken. And even if you did have to fix it, it would only cost one-tenth of that. And so, we were facing that, of course. They had a phalanx of engineers. They had testing. They had contractors who were going to call everything we set into question, of course. Then they also found some pretty tremendous problems with the process that occurred back at the time that was accepted. And also, some pretty tremendous problems with the communication that went between the engineers, the developers, some of the city, and the folks who issued the bond. And the bonding company made it very clear that they intended to ask the judge to call the bond invalid altogether and make it worth zero dollars. And so, without, of course, the benefit of going through litigation, you have to evaluate all of those defenses and claims. But I can tell you this, they did bring an adjuster down from Iowa, you know, from the bonding company. I can tell you that the money she brought with her that she intended to use to settle this case did not come close to what we ended up getting out of them, which was $400,000. Now, the bond amount maximum, had we hit a dinger in the trial, was worth $970,000. We have estimates from Chris to replace the entire system at $1.4 million. But I want to reiterate, that's if everything would have gone absolutely perfectly at trial. And I'm here to tell you, I've never been through a trial where everything did go absolutely perfectly. We're also about to run into some tremendous costs in preparing for trial in another round of depositions, including Mr. Carnahan in Hot Springs, and maybe a fellow in Seattle, Washington, or Tacoma, Washington. So, having said that, I think that the, you know, through the, with the support of Mr. Bunton, through the kind of negotiation skills of the mayor, we pulled quite a bit more money out of the bonding company than they were prepared to spend today. I advised the mayor that he could ink that deal and make that settlement today without council approval. He can't spend money without your approval. Can't do that. But he could certainly make money without a council vote. And I hope that you'll encourage him to do that whenever he can. But the mayor was very adamant that he wanted to make sure that you guys were advised. And he also wanted a line in the settlement agreement that said, "This won't be final unless you guys approve it." And so, that's why we're here. That's why we called a hasty meeting, to put this in front of you, ask for an order of the council approving the settlement, so I can inform opposing council that we approve it, so he can get going on that $400,000 check. And so, that's why we're here. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, of course. But I'll just say this, I don't like to litigate cases in open council meetings, okay? So, I may not want to get into the gory details that you might want to know, but if you insist, then I will. But I want to tell you that because we never know what may happen in the future, I like to not sometimes advertise all of the things that we may know about the strengths and weaknesses of cases in an open forum.
Tom, as far as for the settlement, rather than going to court, do we feel it's beneficial to the city to go ahead and settle as opposed to going to court?
I recommend the settlement very highly.
Okay.
And then, the mayor may have an opinion about that as well. But I recommend it as your lawyer.
Even though the cost, we're looking at $1.4 million to actually fix the issues?
I want to be clear about this. I believe that Chris could tell us, Mr. Bunton, Garver Engineers could tell us, that that would be a way of replacing the entire system.
Oh, that's everything.
There is, and of course, I want to tell you that there is an opinion out there of other experts that say, no, it, one, it doesn't need replacing, two, that's not how much it will cost, okay? But I also want to tell you that it's, there have been several discussions about whether replacing that system is the right thing to do.
But $400,000 cover any repairs in the foreseeable future?
Some remedial measures to maybe begin again out there, to look at something completely different. The truth is, we don't know. We don't know. We know that, we've discussed everything from filling those pipes full of concrete, so we never have to worry about them again, ever, and starting all over, ripping those streets up and starting all over again out there, putting the water where it should have gone in the first place, to other kinds of measures. And right now, I think right now that place is a blank slate. Now, we're getting into my opinion, which is, one, not informed because I'm not a contractor. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a developer, I'm not even a builder. But I think to get that property built on as soon as possible, we need to get it remediated and let people decide they can do with it whatever they want and not be tied to the little bitty lots that are on there right now.
Tom? Essentially, Mayor, we're locked. There's really no more development that can be done until this is settled. Is that an accurate statement?
It's accurate in the sense that when you begin to get into full disclosure of the things that you know, subject to the FOIAs and everything else, how are you going to allow somebody a building permit when you know that the parking lot that they parked their handicap vehicle on may collapse at some point because of the infrastructure and under the law? So, this is why I have taken the position that I'm not comfortable with issuing more building permits in that area until something is done about repairs to that area or some other type of alternative plan for the development out there, so.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me, or maybe Cindy can tell me, how much we've expended in litigation fees so far?
I can tell you it's in the tens of thousands of dollars so far. And this mediation process today is only a fraction, even though it's expensive, of what it will cost once we begin a trial.
Well, I was just wondering what our net would be if we accept the $400,000. It sounds like it'd probably be around $300,000, do you think, Tom?
More than 300 by far. We haven't spent $100,000 in legal or even costs by any means.
Well, I'm sorry.
Another question regarding something Cindy gave me earlier in answer to a question last night. What is the $1.2 million we've got for?
Oh, I'm sorry, is it $1.2, Chris?
No, $1.2 is in the budget. And so, we've just been sitting on it. So, then we would be getting at least another $300,000 on top of the $1.2.
Well, the legal fees have already went through the budget, so they've already been expended.
The $1.2 must be a debit to the budget, not a, not a.
It shows?
I'll be very, very clear about that. That was a litigation tactic, putting that in the budget. We wanted to show the world that we believed that this would cost us this much. And we want to show the world that's how much we were looking for because the bond came in under that. And so, it may have even been me who recommended memorializing that in a budget process.
So, we don't really have that money? So, we're really coming up short.
You know, to continue on with the litigation costs, and I'll ask Tom, but I've got to believe it's likely that if we go to trial, and even if we prevail, it will be appealed. And then, and then if it's appealed, then again, we've got more litigation costs and it drags us down. So, you know, my inclination is, you know, the bird in the hand too in the bush deal. My inclination is to take what our city attorney and our mayor are recommending and let's move forward with it. The last thing we need is to slow down the progress that this city's prepared to make.
As far as the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
As far as least expensive option, if we were to go out there and fill up the pipes with cement, you know, what, any ballpark idea? I mean, is that even feasible?
You have to fill the whole thing up. You may find pieces. It's one option.
I guess what I'm wondering is, will the $400,000 at least do some base level? Do we have any idea if that'll even cover base level?
Dig them up, fill them in.
I don't disagree because with legal costs, you'll eat up anything you're going to get. So, I'm not in favor of that. I'm just, would like to have an informed opinion.
Paula, I can give you this. This I can absolutely give you. It's written in a document. They, first of all, to save, to keep from paying anything on this bond, they were willing to spend $200,000 in costs and legal, probably which they have. Now, one of the things they did was they dug up a bunch of holes to look at it. They didn't believe us. They ended up putting a camera and a human being, he really did crawl through it, Jimmy. We saw the video. A human being through every part of that pipe that a human being could crawl through. And that human being is someone who they hold out to be experienced in subterranean storm drainage structures. And that person did a plan. Looks like it's put a good deal of work into it. And the complete total of the repairs that that person gave their opinion along with an engineer to repair everything out there that's broken today, not three years ago, but today, is $385,000, okay? So, here's why they weren't going to be even close to spending that today. It turns out that they have discovered through depositions, mostly of Shaki Yamadun, that the vast part, majority of the pipes out there, that is, just about south of the Gold's Gym, all the way to the Southern Morse portion and east and west from that point, were not accepted by the city of Lowell at the time this bond was issued. They weren't accepted until several months later. The face of the bond says this bond covers all those improvements accepted by the city of Lowell as of that date.
Gotcha.
The pressure, the lesson we can learn is the pressure that the planning people were under, this is before Chris got here, the pressure that her predecessors were under was so great that they were basically bullied into bending rules, changing rules, letting things go through because people were coming to this council meeting when it was over there. And Melanie can tell you about it. And Jeanette, you can talk about it, maybe. I don't know who else was here.
Keith.
Were you here?
Keith.
Threatening and threatening the city. "We're going to sue you if you don't let us build this. You're costing us millions of dollars. You're ruining this whole project." People in Lowell really wanted it to happen. And so, that bond got issued before that work was completely finished. So, that's why they weren't even willing to give us that $385,000 to fix the whole thing.
Okay.
But that answers the question is, the one, we do have one opinion that says to fix everything out there that they think is broken is $385,000. Now, Chris's opinion is the one that we stand by, that we could replace the whole thing, the $1.4. But we're not able to do that unless we find $800,000.
Of course, there'll be a reassessment of everything if we were to accept this, so. As far as what, there's definitely sections of that that possibly could be salvaged. To what degree, that's on the engineering table. Alternate plans, so on and so forth. Thing about it's tying up our development. And I think I've made this real clear in the past, that we only have two or three areas within our city for retail development, that being a prime location. The damage it has done in the last six years, the past six years, as far as attracting further development resulting in retail sales, resulting in sales tax and further improvements. If this goes to court, we could actually be looking at another two to three years before it is settled. And we don't know what our risk would really involve. You know, they have made some good points, but we have some tremendously good points as well. But it's, I kind of like Dean's analogy, you know, we have one bird in the hand opposed to two in the bush. And this is an opportunity in that sense to settle this and move on, so.
The other side I have to look at this is, the reason why I have a building in the city of Springdale is because that's where I could afford it. I wanted my business based in Lowell. And when I, I actually looked at a piece of property over there and, yeah, I could buy it for a decent price, but then I couldn't get a building permit for it. There was no reason for me to buy it. It is absolutely tied up. So, in one sense, it chased me out of town. You know, there was, there was not that many pieces of property that was, was prime location where I wanted to be. But that one was it. And I know that I talked to two or three other people that really would love to be over there, but without the ability to really put anything in there because it's tied up in litigation. You call the realtor and they'll tell you, no, you can buy it, but you can't put anything on it. It's in litigation.
But same is true. It can't be developed until we fix the problems. I mean, and I understand what we're saying. At least we're freeing it up where we can look at the budget and fix a portion.
And I think immediately, you know, we would need to assess all of this and designate this settlement to that project, you know, getting that done as swiftly as the city could accomplish it. But that's.
Like I say, even if we, even if we prevail, it's going to be appealed. And we can't, we can't afford the time. We may be just throwing good money after bad if we go down that avenue. No disrespect intended, not to say your bad money, Tom.
No, I, you could ask the mayor. I've been preaching that all day.
How soon could we get an estimate? I assume I'm talking to Chris? No. How soon would we be able to get some kind of rough estimate so we can be looking at our budget?
On what are our options and how much they cost?
Well, forgive me for my ignorance. I guess some of this was before my time. What, we've always talked in litigation, it's about, what is the problem? I understand the drainage isn't working. Is it flooding out? Is it backing up? Is stuff washing out? I've never driven in there, so I have no idea. You want someone to back up?
Streets are caving in.
The easiest way to start this out, the first thing I noticed, Jimmy and I, I called Jimmy one night. It was storming like crazy right after they had gotten this area done. There was a house that was being flooded. It was night of city council. I called Jimmy and I said, "Do we have a, do we have a pump?" There's a house right on the corner of our city that's flooding. Went out there with a trash pump, pumped it and pumped it and pumped it, and found out they weren't doing any good. It was coming back into the house. They piped everything to flood this house. The house has actually been condemned. The house is gone. And that was like basically start step one.
Where was the house located on the map here?
That's the one they burned, isn't it?
Utterly irrelevant. What about the house?
If you can, Eric, if you can blow that picture up.
Streets are collapsing because the drains are starting to squeeze.
It'd be in the lower.
Streets and the curbs are falling down.
Corner of that, where that dark area.
The practice burned it.
Bedding.
It backed up to the duplexes right there.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Right, my thing.
I was just, during the construction, was anybody?
Well, if you've got, if you've got a couple of hours, I can.
Was the large scale?
Two years worth of discovery for you.
And I'm trying to remember, did we prove the large scale on this without all the inspections being complete? Was that part of it?
That was all swamp land there at one point.
Yeah.
Eric, could you zoom out all the way?
The other question, the process. I don't know the process. Do we do the inspections or do we have third parties do inspections on developments?
Was an issue that the engineer had possibly failed his responsibilities in this.
Engineer was a party to sue. He was accused of having failed in his oversight in the construction process. The contractors were a party. They were accused of failing to install properly. Subcontractors were parties. And of course, the developers were a party. Now, of those people, the contractor, Coast Construction, long gone. I mean, not, they're not ashes in the wind. They're so far gone. They're bankrupt or dead, and there is no money. The developers are bankrupt or dead, and there's no money. The subcontractor didn't do anything wrong. And the engineer is no longer an engineer. His company is no longer in existence. It's bankrupt and there is no insurance for the engineer. So, there is, you can blame all kinds of people. By all kinds of reasons it happened, but that's why we had a bond.
Has he been turned over to the board, the engineer or me?
I've always heard rumors about that with Shaki, that he's been turned over and that kind of thing. My guess is he would talk his way out of that, you know. But he's not right now doing any engineering. They say he's at Walmart now reviewing site plans or something for some other.
So, I take it the, the bank owns this property now?
Yes.
Are they willing to do any sharing when we do the infrastructure improvement as far as the cost? Because it's going to improve their property to sell it.
It's not been negotiated or discussed.
What'd you say, I'm sorry, Tom? Well, the bank owns the property, I mean, obviously we have a flooding issue, we need to take care of that, but once we improve all that stuff and we put it back, that's going to make that property valuable again and able to sell, as the bank's willing to contribute to any repairs that would help us have to come up with extra money. If we have to go as much as 1.4, like Paul is saying, that's another million bucks that we got to come up with, is it going to have any sharing with them? The settlement sounds great, I'm just making a suggestion that a comment about it, you know?
I think that's probably, you know, something certainly worth pursuing.
Yeah.
Which bank owns it? Is this owned by one bank or multiple banks?
One bank and it's sitting right up there.
That used to be.
The, in the offer that I was given, when I talked to the realtor about the property, it was about 10 cents on the dollar. That's what really intrigued me about that, and I was, I was looking at what we cost to fix just that property, I think I went and talked to Jimmy about that, and he said, that's where I dropped it at. So if there, if it's a cent on the dollar, it might be, it might be something the bank might be interested in working with us, but knowing banks, they don't like to give out money, do they?
Not very much.
Well, come on now.
Just one other question from an engineering perspective, is it possible to do a partial repair on like part of the property? Is that even feasible from an engineering perspective? I realize you probably haven't had, you can't speak fully on that, but...
We haven't evaluated the conceptual option yet, but it might be possible to fix the lower, the southern part of the property first, get that developed and continue to move north, and you know, disallow improvement kind of in that middle area. But essentially, everything drains down to this point right here and crosses the highway. There's kind of a hill right here where storm water flows to the north naturally, north of this line and flows to the south, so, and the water that used to, pre-developed, used to go, this area used to be a big swamp and just sat there. So essentially, what they did to develop this property is they put multiple pipes and go from here all the way to here, and doing so, they had to cross underneath that hill. These pipes are, you know, 30 feet deep down in the ground, they're collapsing, they're egg shaping, they're squashing, there's, from here to here, there's 348-inch pipes. They're large diameter pipes and very deep.
Okay. Where do they drain to?
They all drain and cross the highway right here, right underneath the railroad bridge.
It's that black line, Jeanette, you said black line?
I have a question for Tom. If we, could we not go ahead, if we went ahead and made all the improvements in this development, and then by, maybe by ordinance or, I guess you have to do it by ordinance, create it and like an improvement district and charge impact fees on, when the lots sell, as the banks sell the lots, whoever buys the lots would pay just their portion of their improvements in the development? Could we not do that?
I started my research on that question, and I haven't finished it yet, trying to find it.
I gave him a head start.
Here's the answer I can give you so far, Keith. If it were sanitary sewer, the answer would be yes. If it were water pipes, the answer would be no. As for storm, drain, reclamation, repair, the answer is, I'm not sure. I will say that there are different ways of obtaining fees, impact fees, even for a small area could be possible. I know that the mayor and I have already begun to discuss, what about on specific permits or something, because this area is so unique in the city, that that would be possible. But I think that there are ways we could find to recover some of that cost based upon people who are purchasing lots and developing them.
Wasn't there approximately 20 lots in there, something like that, or was there more than that?
Chris, do you recall?
Far more.
So I mean, if you divided that, oh, so if you had 50 lots, 40 lots?
You'd want to do it by footage, though, I think.
Yes, you would, you would, but I'm just saying.
Because you made, the lots that are there now that were planted six years ago may not make any sense in today's economy.
And it all depends on, yeah, and it depends if someone that has a larger, you know, if they want to put a larger building there, they may take two lots, three lots. I guess that's maybe one way to recover a lot of the cost, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we could recover all of it, but...
Are those pipes plastic or concrete? Plastic, I'm sure.
They're all plastic corrugated, high-density polyethylene plastic pipes.
Was that the problem, they should have been concrete, or?
Well, the problem with concrete pipes is it's a rigid pipe, and what they installed was a polyethylene pipe, it's a flexible pipe, which depends, you know, gets its strength and the bedding material and back compaction, the backfill around it, and more than likely, you know, wasn't bedded or backfilled property, and that's why the pipe is failing. There's other issues too, such as groundwater, and didn't put it on a stable, you know, bedding material and such, but more than likely, it wasn't bedded and backfilled properly.
This properties have all the sewage, sewer and water there?
As far as I know, we have all sewer and water.
We have all utilities, it's just the storm.
That was part of the swap with that property concerning where Walmart exists today.
So if we got the storm address, they could take off?
Utilities there for swapping land there.
Any fixes, you'd use concrete?
Would you take the chance of making sure it was bedded properly this time?
Hey, we'd, our recommendation was, there are several, our recommendation to replace in kind was to reuse as much of this pipe as possible that wasn't damaged, just because most cost effective, but there was quite a few areas that we had to replace. So it's a kind of a combination of replacing the damaged areas and rebedding and recompacting the whole entire system, is where the 1.4 comes from. But as far as, you know, if we had to, you know, replace this with all concrete pipe, that would, that would cost even more.
And what kind of guarantee or longevity of that repair would you guys put on it?
You know, typically, you know, large diameter pipeline, if it's properly installed and properly tested upon, you know, completion with, you know, air testing and then manual testing and, you know, certain, about a month after backfill to ensure that, you know, it's not deflecting and it was properly installed, 100 years.
Chris, is there a compaction test that can be done in some of those areas without digging at those areas? Is there some type of procedure that engineers use to core down and check for compaction without disturbing the ground?
Not really, we could do core samples and get, you know, material properties of the soil, and we can excavate down and take density tests at a certain level, but, and they do make ultrasonic stuff that they use to, you know, run over the ground and check densities of the subsoles and, you know, some, a lot of the video inspection we've seen on this pipe, doesn't appear that any bedding material was used at all, period. You see holes in the pipe and red dirt behind it. Engineers' plans had, you know, the bedding material like it was supposed to have around the pipe, and the difficulty with this is it's, you know, large diameter pipe, you've got three parallel pipelines, and trying to properly install that bedding material around the pipe zone or the haunches underneath the pipe to get its structural support is, you know, you have to know what you're doing when you install it.
I guess the question too would be, the developer dropped the ball on this, they use inferior products, they didn't possibly get their inspections done correctly. When this is working well, when that water's flowing and going across the road, is it going to impact anybody on that side?
Originally, there was one culvert underneath the highway here. With the development, they added, what, three, Jimmy? And they, and they didn't, you know, do it, and there's kind of a valley right here, it's an ideal spot for a detention pond to detain it in this, this area right here, but they did, they did increase the amount of water, and we have had complaints in the past, you know, two or three years ago from downstream property owners. And if you go out there, well, I hadn't been out there in several years, but there's, it washes out the kind of the peer, the support on the railroad bridge and part of the state highway right there, so that's, it's kind of a separate issue then.
Well, like sheet flow on a vacant piece of property or your water flow now would be lessened once it's developed and grass is put in. If they put a detention, if we had a detention pond, that would maybe help the stuff going across too?
Yeah, and the original, the original plats called for, even when these people develop these lots, to put in their own individual detention ponds all through here. And I think these are all less than a quarter acre lots, are pretty small.
That's, by the time you put in a retention pond, your building's going to get to be that much smaller too.
Did the 1.4 million dollars include rebuilding all the streets exactly where they're at now?
A lot of this, that's a good question, but a lot of this storm sewer is just, you know, a few feet behind the back of curb, and given, given the depth, in order to repair the storm sewer, you're going to have to tear out the road and the curb and gutter, so that did include quite a few, didn't include replacing all the streets, but all the streets that are adjacent to the storm sewer pipes.
So we could repair all of the drainage and just not rebuild the street, and as it develops out, if someone buys, purchases the land, they could put the roads where they want them at that point, I mean...
That's possible, yes. Just not put it back and let the developer do it.
How, would that save quite a bit of money, just not replacing?
It would save some. I would have to go back and look on how much it would save, but that would be one option, not put the roads back.
Have to rework the budget.
I just want to close maybe with this, and that is, the, if you take from all of our discussions that we don't have much confidence in the design, workmanship, or even concept of this project that we're looking at, did it lead you to conclude that maybe we should relook at everything and not be stuck with having to replace pipes and worry about the road, or worry about little bitty detention ponds and listen to Mr. Bunton and maybe build a big one somewhere where it belongs? And like he said earlier, send the drainage where it actually should go, so we don't have a problem in the future in that southeast corner, which I think your street, I'm sorry, your public works superintendent would tell you that he's a little bit worried about taking out railroad crossings and the like. I don't know if you've ever messed with the railroad folks before, but I can tell you it's an unpleasant experience. So when you're asking Mr. Bunton to, if you approve the settlement, to use this money, he can ask him to work with a blank slate, and you may get a tremendous result with the amount of money that you have.
Now, that was, that was my thoughts on the, you know, one of the options is bulldoze it completely down and start from scratch. That way it's done properly.
And on that vein, Terry, I think you're exactly right, and the series of small detention ponds like you spoke of, you know, for one thing, detention pond, they don't ever look nice. I mean, certain times of year when it is wet, the grass has grown up, there's trash in it, the Lowe's detention pond on 412 in Springdale is a great example, looks terrible. So I would certainly agree that blank slate, clean sheet of paper, start over in one pond somewhere else if that's what we decide to do, but...
How would this affect the existing businesses that are currently there? Would it affect them at all?
Not really, because...
If we went with a clean slate?
Not much, I can't, you know, I guess the existing businesses, you know, they don't have to drive through this development or construction zone to get to their workplace, they have access off the main road here, but, you know, there would be some noise and some dust and...
And these duplexes are part of this development, right?
Yeah, these ones right, right here.
So your fire apparatus would have to have these, what, a 90-foot turnaround back there, or they'd have to have a way to circle around around behind that bank or something to leave that road, wouldn't you?
Yes.
You know, who it would affect is the bank, who may be thinking someday they're going to sell all those little lots, they would need to be brought on board. But if they don't want to come on board, then they need to be told, you need to get this thing developed or this plot's going to expire.
Doesn't our city, six months, don't we expire, or we have a longer extension on projects like this? The development, if it's not approved in six months, you would usually want to resubmit.
I'm not sure about that, we could look into that, though.
I'm just spouting off what the city to the south does, I mean, we get a, you know, construction project, they walk away for it for more than six months, it starts all over, the development may be the same way here.
I'm sure you're probably right, Thomas, with that double check.
Well, I guess if we're sitting here, I mean, I like the thought of not making repairs to mistakes and starting fresh, and if it's potentially cheaper, or even if it's not cheaper, the mayor alluded to it earlier, at least we have a chance if we could start over, you could make this into bigger developments opposed to smaller lots, I don't know how big the lots were proposed to be. I don't like the retention ponds, it's a safety hazard, we just had the drowning issue last night with the lady, that's what you have, I mean, you don't necessarily have to make them, especially if they're a dry retention, you don't have to do any kind of fencing around them, I just don't think that would be great to see either, you know, so. I like, I like the clean concept, I don't like litigation, I've been in litigation for the last 18 months myself, and it's not much fun, so.
With that being said, I think we're all kind of going towards the same thought, really off base here, I mean, we're talking more about how we're going to fix it, but really what's at hand is whether or not we're going to accept the offer. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to accept the offer.
Second.
A motion by Eric Stein, and was it second by Keith Williams?
Just going to give it to you.
Do y'all prefer to do this by voice vote or by road call?
I think it's going to be unanimous, voices fine by me.
Okay. All that is in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you very, very much. I think this will put us back on the road to getting some businesses out there. Here's been my concern all along, if something doesn't get done through my term here, this will be into a fourth term, you know, so we've got Phil Biggers, Perry Long, myself, and I see this being dragged through the courts for probably two to three years, and I think we are industrious as a community, we're great at problem solving, and I think we can take that piece of property with Chris's help and planning and others, and Chris Bunton and other engineering minds that work for them, and turn this into a piece of property that we can begin now to work with the bank and draw some businesses that are going to put some income, some revenue in the city's coffers eventually. Again, I kind of go back, there's a time just to cut your losses, and we started high and they started extremely low, but I do feel that we have reached a settlement that we can designate that to get this started and just handle it as business develops and inquiries are made about the property in the months to come, and we will work it out. I think, I think we are a city that has proven that we can bounce back, we're resilient and things like this, and we will make the best use of that property. Right now, it's been bogged down for over six years, another two to three years, you're looking at 10 years, and just think of what might have been if we had attacked this head on.
What would we look like if Cabellos went there instead of Rogers?
Mm-hmm, oh yeah.
I have a point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to declare that this motion has been approved, the motion to approve the resolution is approved, and the resolution number will be 12-17.
It's just an order of the council, I think. It's not, it's just an approval order.
It's approval order, it doesn't need to come in a resolution form.
My apologies.
So Mayor, is it safe to say that you're going to bring the bank in on board and have some discussions about?
Oh, yes, positively, I mean, it's...
Is it, would it be, could we go to the bank and say, here's $40,000, fix the problem, or that's not how it works? They have a vested interest in this, obviously, or could we go to the bank and say, hey, we'll buy that on pennies on the dollar? And then the city owning the property and try to sell it off? We can't be a real estate brokerage company?
At this point, there can be a lot of speculation, but I assure you, we're going to go slow. to go slow and evaluate all the options, and it's a process of, um, we will, um, continue to look at it very seriously, and you'll be, all of you kept in the loop, that's why we're here tonight, so...
And all the utilities are there, you said, all the sewer, water, gas, so even the blank slate's kind of a, almost a pipe dream, as we will, you know, because if you start changing up the lot sizes and you start crossing lots, you can't do that, you can't cross sewer lines and all that, so you actually would have to replace probably all your sewer, gas, water lines.
Unless we pumped all that full of, uh, what do you call that, Chris, backflow? Global fill, then you don't have to disturb that.
Well, I mean, if you go back the way it is, you probably would have to disturb it, but if you start with a blank slate, then if you've already got your sewer taps, water taps and everything in place, you can't by state law cross water lines into somebody else's property unless you make each individual person get an easement, and that's going to...
Point of order, I, I think we can't, I think we're past...
Yeah, we have to stop right now.
Yeah, we're, we're, uh...
No, it's, 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 we're out of line.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second by Dean Bittner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Being no objections, the meeting is adjourned at...